I'd like to welcome everybody to the official voting meeting for the Village of Westmont for September 6, 2011. Madam Clerk, if you could please do the roll.
Mayor Ron is absent tonight. Mayor Pro Tim Nero.
Here.
The Clerk's here. Trustee Emery.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Klebenow is absent. Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Manager Cyril.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Police Chief Malvern.
Here.
Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimball.
Here.
Acting Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief and Deputy Liquor Commissioner Gunther.
Here.
That's it.
All right. Everybody, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item up, the minutes from the combined committee of the whole meeting and the board meeting held August 11, 2011. Motion to approve, Fleming?
Second, Seneca.
A discussion?
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Reports, Mayor. I'd like to welcome Mr. John O'Halloran from ComEd today to present.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the opportunity to join you guys tonight and go over the storm presentation that we've prepared for you. And I believe we're going to have it up on the screens here.
Yeah, he'll do that from in there.
Okay. Very good. Very good. As Trustee Nero said, my name's John O'Halloran, External Affairs Manager with ComEd. Joined by two of my colleagues tonight, Jose Andrade, who's my supervisor. He's Director of External Affairs for South Region. And Mike Ray, he's the Engineering Manager for our Southern Region, in which Westmont Falls. Just to give you an overview of the storm and restoration efforts from this summer, and then talk about a couple of things that we're working on in addition to these matters. This is a chart just showing that the summer months, June to August, was the most active we've seen as long as we've been recording outage information. These are individual customer storm-related outages going back, 2007 was the most we'd had prior to this summer. As you recall, we had a number of severe storms in June and July, and some lesser storms, which totaled at least 2.4 million customer interruptions system-wide. And this ComEd system is basically the northern third of Illinois. Some of the numbers from some of those storms, the June 8 storm affected about 190,000 customers, thousands of lightning strikes, high winds, hail. June 21 was the first of the two big storms that we had hit our area about 7:00 at night. Two confirmed tornadoes, one over here in Downers Grove, one up in Mount Prospect. And then 81 mile an hour wind gusts measured. June 30, another comparatively small storm, but in itself, you know, knocked out power to 100, over 170,000 customers. Again, high wind gusts, large hail. July 11 was actually the largest storm that we had faced as a company, with over 850,000 customers impacted, and wind gusts from about 70 to 85 miles an hour. This was a system-wide storm that just kind of marched across the system on that Monday morning. July 24, another large storm, large rainfall, thousands of lightning strokes. Majority of our distribution equipment is overhead, so any of those lightning strokes can hit a pole, hit a transformer, and, you know, cause damage to the system. Like I said, July 11 storm is one of the most significant that we've faced in our history. Thousands of lightning strokes, high winds, uprooting trees, breaking poles, bringing down miles of lines. And throughout the storm event, almost a quarter of the customers were affected by the, you know, in some way by the outages. Our restoration work started early that day. We monitor the weather like you wouldn't believe. We, you know, we get forecasts from our own weather service. We're watching Tom Skilling, we're doing the Weather Channel, all those, you know, weather entities that we're monitoring. So we knew that this was going to be a bad storm before it came. We had our command center mobilized, open for outage response. Throughout the event, we used over 11,000 crews. These were contractor crews. These were crews that came in from other states. We replaced 77 miles of cable, 600 poles, 1,000 transformers, damaged most often by trees and/or the high winds. Call center fielded about a million calls in those five days. We get about nine or 10, or five or six million calls a year. So we had, you know, a tremendous increase in, tremendous increase in the incoming call volume. One thing that we did pride ourselves on, that there were no serious safety incidents through the entire restoration effort. It went on most of that week into the following weekend, and we're dealing with, you know, obviously potentially energized electric lines, we're in backyards, we're in flooded areas, trees down everywhere. You know, we're happy that none of our employees, any customers, any contractors, or any other utility workers that were helping had any serious incidents. We instituted a number of things to try to speed restoration, improve communications with our communities, mobile supply units, both kind of command center units and equipment units out in the field, in the areas where the damage was the worst. We placed external affairs managers, account managers, other people from our back office or operations into the towns to work with the local leaders. And then we worked with the counties and the local leaders to identify priority facilities, water pumping, police, fire, those type of facilities. Focusing on Westmont, we serve about 12,000 customers in Westmont, residential, small, commercial, large, commercial industrial customers. And in the July, I'm sorry, the June storm, about 4,700, so about a third of them were affected during that June 21 storm event. And about, what's that, a sixth or 2,200 were affected by the July 11 event. Frustrating for customers, frustrating for us. You know, there were many that were affected in that June 21 storm, that were then affected in that July 11 storm, and potentially by other events this summer. So, you know, we have been hearing that a lot from customers, that they've had multiple outages, and some of them long outages over the course of the year. One thing that we've done, following the storms in settings like this and in other settings, is just been working with the municipalities, the counties, the other elected officials to say, hey, we want the same things that all you people want, faster restoration times and more accurate restoration estimates. One of the biggest challenges in a big, big event is getting those estimated restoration times, getting them into the system, and getting them out to the customers. I tell people that if the lights went off right now, it would take an hour or so between the time we got the information in, determine what the problem was, dispatch people out to the field to manually open and close switches and restore the power. In a large event, 300,000 people out, 400,000 people out, or more, that hour or so, that can go to one day or two days before we've got our arms around really how long it's going to take before restoration is going to be completed. As soon as a storm hits, we're out there restoring customers from the time the storm clears. It's just a matter of how we get that information about when those customers are going to be restored. We've got some technology that we're hoping we can get in place, and we'll talk about that in a couple of minutes, that can help us do that better going forward. This is an overview of our storm response process. Step one is to work on the high voltage lines, usually the metal towers that carry the power regionally from Wisconsin, Iowa, Indiana, through the Midwest, into the substations, which then branch out into the neighborhoods. So those are kind of the backbone of the system. We have to make sure that those transmission lines are up and running. Generally, we've got redundant transmission service into the substations, so we want to make sure that those lines are up and running, basically. The next step we do is we look at the circuits that come out of those substations, identify those that serve the critical facilities to the municipalities and other entities, hospitals, police, fire stations, water reclamation plants, 911 centers. And then we focus as we can on restoring service to those feeders that in turn serve those types of facilities. While we're working on restoring those main feeders, we're also looking in step three at downstream outages that don't involve the entire feeder, but still serve potentially hundreds or maybe 1,000 customers, a large commercial building, a large residential building, something that we can go to and restore a great deal of customers at one time. Step four is the single-phase line that runs through the backyards, that feeds the individual neighborhoods and individual services. We have to make sure that we've got the source and then the main feeds before we can get into those backyards and start restoring those services. So as we're working those main, those feeder lines, as we're working those large device outages, we're also trying to determine what kind of local damage is done, broken transformers, broken poles in the backyards. Like I said, we've got a couple of technology improvements that we're looking to make on a large scale. Right now, our electric meters are analog meters. They are read once a month by the meter reader that comes by the house and writes down there. It records the usage. What we'd like to do is get what are called smart meters, or more sophisticated meters in the place, that talk with us on a two-way basis at all times, would let us know that they're out of power. One question that we get following storms is, what do you mean, you don't know that I'm out of power? Unless the entire line goes out, and everybody on that line is out from the substation, roughly, say, 1,000 customers, we don't know that 20 customers here are out, or 40 customers there are out. The smart meters and in a modern grid would give us that information real time, so we would be able to look at a screen and say, we've got 40 customers here that are out, we've got 80 customers here that are out, and then dispatch to those individual problems. Right now, like I said, the meters don't give us that kind of information. It's important for customers to call us, let us know that they're out. The other thing that the smart meters would let us do is identify customers that are still out after we do restoration work, thinking that we've picked up everyone. Right now, customers, a little pocket of customers will still be out because of a local problem. We'll restore 1,000 customers, think we picked up everyone, and then start getting calls from those people saying that they're still out of power. With the smart meters, again, we'd be able to look at a screen and say, okay, you picked up 1,000, but you still have 25 over here that are out of service. So, the other thing that the smart meter, the smart grid would give us, a more modern grid would give us, would be automated switching that in most cases would be able to limit the number of customers out of service due to an outage. Right now, if a tree falls down on the line, we have to manually go out, open switches, close switches, depending on the configuration of the system. The smart switches, the modern switches, automated switches, would do that type of analysis and switching automatically. So that, two things that a more modern grid would help with. Like I said, the modern grid reroutes the power around a trouble spot. The estimate, based on the June and July storms, is we would have saved a couple hundred thousand, 200,000 customer interruptions of those total 1.3 million interruptions. So that would have been 200,000, 250,000 customers that would have seen, you know, would not have seen the interruption had a more sophisticated grid been in place. As I said, we've been to many, many meetings like this, presenting information, getting feedback back from organizations. We've done a review of our system to try to find better ways to respond in storm situations. You know, some of the things we're looking at, we've already planned another 1,000 phone lines into the call center to try to alleviate some of that bottleneck on those high-call-volume days. We're looking at improving our dispatching of tickets, just getting the work out to the field more, and working with the new social media techniques, Twitter, Facebook, to try to get the messages out about restorations and outages. This is just some information on our Senate bill, which is down in Springfield right now, that deals with funding the smart meters and smart switches. On the right side are the benefits of the technology. First thing, like I said, would be that two-way communication. We'll be reading the meters remotely, so we're going to save money for the customers in terms of meter reading. We've, would save money now in terms, or we would save money with these in terms of cutting customers off for non-payment. Believe it or not, not everyone pays their electric bill on time or at all, and we lose a certain amount of money every year to people that don't pay and continue to use and know how to get around the system. So we'd have the ability to not have to send someone out to shut the power off, but do it remotely. There are also customer benefits. Right now, like I said, your meter's read once a month. After the fact, you find out what your usage was. There are applications, technology applications available that give customers information, let them make decisions based on rate and rate considerations as to when they would use their appliances, for instance. The smart meters would interface, could potentially interface with a home system to help customers better manage their energy. We estimate about 2,000 full-time jobs over the course of the program, a 10-year program, installing the meters and upgrading the system. You know, we've talked to the cable manufacturers, we've talked to the wire manufacturers, and they want to come in and, under this program, you know, work with us for improving the infrastructure, changing out cables, changing out the wire and poles, and improve the reliability. And then the economic competitiveness. One of the things that we hear is that, you know, the electric grid, designed and installed basically in the 1900s, late, you know, into the 2000s, hasn't kept pace with the criticality of the loads that are out there now. Data centers, you know, heavy information technology companies that, you know, need the reliable power, and it's a challenge for us to provide the power that they need. Any questions on storms, modernizing, smart grid, anything along those lines?
Well, how much gets replaced?
I'm sorry?
How much gets replaced? You're talking about modernizing the equipment and replacing cables. Is this cables that needs repair anyhow, and you're going to be doing that? Or is this equipment that's all inside that we don't see? Or is it actually coming out to the houses besides the meter?
The infrastructure side of the legislation calls for an increase in the amount of cable replacement that we do now. We do programs, replacement programs for cable, poles, and wires now. What we'd like to do is scale that up many times to, you know, to try to get ahead of the issues that we do have with underground cable failures, old poles, old wires. So right now, we-
So you have a replacement program that you go out and then say, okay, we have issues in this area? Or is it by complaint?
It's by, it's reactive now to complaints and-
So there's no program for just normally saying, okay, in this area here, the poles are 50 years old, and the wires are, you know, what, 50 years old too? It's time to replace them because they've aged.
Correct.
Now, just by whatever complaints there is, that's how you fix it?
Right. We look at the performance of the circuits, all the circuits that serve Westmont and all the other towns. And Mike and his team identify what needs to be done to improve the reliability of those circuits. So when we look at Westmont, we see 43 circuits in the town. And we identify those each year that have the least, the poorest performance, you know, the worst performing ones. And then, like I said, Mike and his team reach into their tool bag and say, okay, this one needs cable replacement, this one needs tree trimming, this one needs pole replacement. And then there's their program dollars that are devoted to those activities. And then the intention is to address those issues that have caused those problems and driven those outages.
So you're doing it both proactively and reactively?
Mostly reactively, somewhat proactively. But we'd like to make the proactive side higher through a five-year comprehensive program going forward.
So if you're doing a lot of it reactively, and you were talking about changing out wires and changing out poles, do you have a goal percentage for how much is going to be buried?
As the legislation stands, it's like-for-like replacement. So what's underground now and needs to be replaced would be replaced underground. What's overhead now and needs attention would be replaced with new poles and wire.
So are they, what's the lifespan of the new ones? Are we looking at having electrical poles up when you show pictures of tree trunks hanging over them? Another 50 years?
Correct. The lifespan nominally, let's say, let's say 50 years for overhead poles, wires.
Well, you made the comment earlier with the smart grid scenario.
Okay.
You first, during, you said 10 years, and I just heard you say five years. Now, in a 10-year, but the question that I have to ask about this whole thing is, if it's going to take 10 years to bring this smart grid system onto play in full effect, so what do you have planned, because you already have equipment now that's 10 years old, versus stuff that's new at the end of this cycle? And what kind of, what kind of testing has been done? What kind of research has been done to even verify the fact that this stuff is going to work like that?
And there are two, there are two facets. The 10-year is the rollout for the smart grid, the smart meters in the home, and the automated switching, and then the remote monitoring. So that piece of it is done over a 10-year period. The five-year piece is the nuts and bolts, cable replacement, pole replacement, wire replacement, manhole, you know, refurbishment, that type of thing.
Five years of prep work.
Five years of work.
Yeah, prep work, to get ready for these new meters and the switching and the pieces.
Well, they're kind of two different buckets. The smart grid side is a 10-year rollout, smart meters for all customers, commercial, residential customers, and then a great increase in the amount of automation that we have on the system now. We have some automation out there today where the system works automated itself. We'd like to scale that up greatly over the next 10 years through that, the smart grid side.
Well, I guess I have to ask the question, which I'm sure a lot of people have already asked you this. Why has there never been a program with ComEd in replacement? I mean, an actual program set forth by the ComEd company to replace old poles, to replace old wires, which we all know they are there. I mean, you can go into any town, and I can take you right down the alley, across the street right now, and show you three poles that should be replaced. Now, my question is, that's all fine and good. You talk about rolling out the smart grid and going five years and 10 years, but you're still going to be on a reactive situation for that period of time until this new system, providing the House says yes, and the Senate bill says yes? There's a lot of skeptics out there right now with the entire scenario, and I guess that's the main question I have. What are you going to do in the meantime while, if this passes and you start moving forward? I mean, what are we to expect, I mean, service-wise with more storms than that? I mean, the same thing?
Over the course of the five-year implementation for the infrastructure modernization, the three poles in the alley would be addressed. You know, those are the kinds of things that would be addressed by the five-year rollout of the infrastructure piece. So, you know, that would, that's what we go after first, are the leaning poles, the multiple failed cables, that type of thing. And the other, and at the same time, the smart grid team over here is installing the smart meters in all the homes. They're automating the system, they're working with the customers, so they get the most benefit out of the technology side of it. And then the engineering and construction side over here is continuing on replacing the leaning poles, the bad wire, the underground cable. So it's a two-pronged approach.
Okay. Now, here's a, for instance, if you have an old box attached to either a house or a business right now, and you're being told that it has to be replaced with a new box, and they come in with the smart meters in there, are you going to have to replace that box again because of this meter? Or are the meters going to be compatible with the box that's been put in place that's, you know, that's having to be replaced?
It should be compatible with the box that's being installed.
It should be, but is it?
It is.
What percentage of ComEd customers right now in northern Illinois have smart meters?
Is that 100?
130,000 and change.
We've got a pilot area out of our Maywood office, including the suburbs in that area and a bit of the city of Chicago, that it's been a two-year pilot program, smart meters, smart switches, an intelligent substation, if you will, automated substation, digital-controlled substation in Oak Park.
How long's it been in place?
It's been a two-year trial program, so they started installing those meters a couple of years ago.
What kind of data did you pull off of that in the storms that came through?
We did see a, we actually had a presentation that Ron was at recently, showing that the smart meters, well, one thing that they did focus on was the ability of that smart meter to report back that it was back in service. What we get a lot of times is customers appear to be out of power, so we'll send someone out there, and they're okay on arrival. And our tech people were able to pull the amount of customers that were shown to be back in service even though, and saved us a trip out there on an operational side.
What's the cost of, or if you can tell me, burying the lines versus putting lines back on poles again, which we know there's going to be, continue to be storms, we're going to continue to have trees, limbs that'll come down on them. So it's putting back old technology in something that's supposed to be a smart grid, or is it just cost-effective for ComEd to do this because it's cheaper than putting them underground?
The storm restoration figures for the summer were about $80 million that we spent between our own crews, paying the contractors, paying the other utilities, nuts, bolts, poles, wires, cables. The numbers that get thrown around for putting the entire system underground, putting a region underground is in the billions, hundreds of billions. So, you know, it's a different scale of figures.
Okay.
We're always willing to talk to individuals, companies, communities about overhead-to-underground conversion. You know, the issue is, is chances are, the feeder is going to be overhead someplace other than, you know, your backyard or your area, susceptible to danger, susceptible to damage. But we have those discussions regularly with-
Generally speaking, isn't the burying is about five times the cost of overhead? Or is that?
I'm going to go to-
Yeah, it's more than five times. It's about $50 a foot.
Okay.
Going underground, compared to less than 10 to replace an overhead per foot. So it's more than five to one.
And one other thing on the modernization and smart grid. Written into the legislation are performance metrics that we have to meet in order for the program to keep going, in terms of average number of interruptions a year, and the frequency and the duration of interruptions. So written into the legislation are those metrics to hold us accountable for the improvements that we say are going to be made through the infrastructure work.
Mr. O'Halloran, is, and I understand the legislation and what you want Springfield to do so that you can, you know, do what apparently you think tips the scales. Give me the last 10 or 15 years, how much of the money's exp- How much of the money's expended were for actual replacement and upgrades versus just repair that just Band-Aid everything? If it's out, then we address it. If it's out, we address it. Wasn't anything ever budgeted or spent for upgrades or replacements without repair being in the factor in it?
So I can address that somewhat right now and for about the last.
Come up so that our residents can hear you because they need the mic to pick you up.
Our annual budget over the last several years is in about $900 million system-wide for maintenance. We also have about equal amount, $900 million to a billion-dollar-a-year investment in new replacements. So we have about a $2 million, ballpark numbers, about a $2 million budget system-wide every year, and it's a little heavier on the capital side to where we actually put investment in replacing equipment. We do have replacement programs. It's not enough, as John was speaking to, to get ahead of things, which this bill will help us do. We do have replacement programs. We do replace cable. We do replace poles. We don't replace them at the pace we'd like to. We replace them what the dollars that we have will limit us to. So there are programs. They are there. We do spend money every year on that type of replacements.
So you are doing some things proactively.
Unfortunately, most of them get replaced because they've either failed at least once or.
So as a service company, it's hard for me to understand why you wouldn't constantly be assessing your current condition and planning two years, three years, five years. I mean, we do it with streets. We do it with sidewalks. We do, I mean.
We do.
It just seems like, kind of like common sense, but you keep saying you're not proactively doing this.
Preventative maintenance. Is there preventative maintenance plan intact?
Yes, every year.
Okay. So taking this a little bit further, if the bill passes and you go with these smart meters in that, and you start replacing these meters into boxes, in houses or businesses or whatever, and you find the box, there's something wrong with the box, who's the cost burden fall upon for the box?
I'm assuming by box you mean the meter fitting that's attached to the home, right? Is that correct?
Home, business, whatever.
Whatever it is. That's the property of the home or business that belongs to it does today. If there's something wrong with it, it's there today. It should be corrected now, whether we replace the meter or not. If there's something wrong with it, there's something wrong with it.
But what I'm saying is, this could be a hidden cost to a business or to a residential person who doesn't know what that problem may be until you come out with this new meter and you come out and you decide, okay, we're going to put it in this house. Oh, we can't do that because there's a problem inside your box. Until you get the box fixed at who knows what kind of price or cost with the day's rates and going forward five, 10 years down the road, who knows what that cost is going to be to a residential customer or a business customer that may have to do that upgrade in order to take this piece of equipment that you want to put on in order to make it easier to read?
You're speaking of the meters, correct?
I'm speaking of the meters going on.
The meters are a direct replacement for what's there. There's no upgrade required to accept the smart meters.
Well, I think one of the questions.
Only upgrade would be required is if there's something already broken.
One of the questions.
Well, yeah, but what I'm saying is, and I understand what you're saying, but what I'm saying is, right now, as it stands, how many of those are there possibly out there that they don't even know that? Until they get to the point where you come out with this new meter, you open it up, you take the lock off, break the seal, whatever, and you go, oh, we can't do this until you correct this.
I think trustee Fleming, I think what the question is, based on your scenario, and I'm going to frame it in two ways. One is hard cost of equipment with the $2 billion that you want to spend and do all this. What of hard equipment such as the box that holds the meter is going to be backcharged to the consumer or the building owner? ComEd isn't going to pick up all of the hard cost of the hardware. There are going to be things backcharged. What is it that's, what type of things is ComEd going to cover? And what type of things are they going to backcharge the consumer?
We're just going to change out the meter on the back of your house with a more sophisticated meter.
At no expense to the consumer?
At no expense to the consumer.
Under any circumstances?
No, other than the bill rate, your bill's pulling up to pay for it.
What about how the service is connected from the pole to the home? I know my home is an older home. It has an older style service, which I believe is the three wires that go in, which I had ComEd come out during all these storms because I had some issues. And they said it was my responsibility to change from the older style setup to the newer style setup. They'll cover the new box, but you have to pay an electrician to set up the new type of service to make your home capable to do that. Are these new boxes going to require that new type of service setup that's going to bear the cost onto the homeowner or the business owner?
The meter would go in, it would just be a simple meter exchange. If the meter tech gets out there, takes out the meter and discovers that it can't take the new meter because there's a broken piece in there or there's something, you know, wrong with it, then that would be the responsibility of the homeowner to address.
So the meter that's working fine now, they're going to incur some cost to upgrade to this new smart meter if they have this older-style service connection?
And I think we're both kind of over our head right now in terms of meter fittings.
There's only one that I'm aware of, older style, and that's if you don't have 240 volts, if you just have 120-volt service, which I don't even know how many are left. There aren't very many of those even left.
There's a couple on 61st Street.
Okay. Those will not accept the new meter. So the plan would be either to leave the old one with the old technology. There are very few of those, system-wide, much less than 1% that I'm aware of. We would just leave the old meter in and not exchange those unless the customer wanted to upgrade his service. We would not force anybody.
Is ComEd going to help with that upgrade? Or is it just all?
That's completely up to the customer, yeah.
Well, then that leads me to the second part of my question. When you talk about replacing wires and poles and all of that, or part of the upgrades will include making sure service goes to all the consumers. I know up at College of DuPage, they changed some of their electrical service, and they had to run the cable under Lambert Road, and so electrical was buried under the road for construction purposes, and they got the whole bill from ComEd for $350,000. What type of things can people in Westmont anticipate that if you've got legislation in place for replacement, and you're going to come in and you're going to replace things, and you're going to tear out old stuff and fix them with new, what besides hardware are they going to look to get billed back to them as consumers? Is there going to be labor for certain upgrades that have to be made to take a new system? Do you have in place a list of the types of things based on what you want with this legislation that ComEd will foot the bill and consumers will foot the bill for the other list B?
Everything would be included under the $3 a month that the average customer would see, you know, an increase if the legislation goes through. So the rate increase would go through, the money would be collected, and the program would be rolled out. So the underground cable in your backyard, which has failed four times in the last two years, would be replaced with a new section of cable with the intention of not having any more outages for another 30 years on that stretch of cable. The leaning pole in your backyard and the wires that have the multiple splices, that'd be replaced with a new pole and new sections of wire. Now, the manhole that feeds downtown here that was put in in the 1950s, and the metal rack inside is old and not holding the cable properly, that would be refurbished and the cables would be reinstalled. So there wouldn't be any charges to customers other than the increase they would see on their monthly bill. On the other side of the coin, they wouldn't see those outages, the four outages in the two years on that section of cable, so there'd be a savings there where they wouldn't incur the expense of, you know, whatever costs an outage is.
What type of guarantee are you going to give for that? Now, if you're saying, on the other hand, they're not going to see these outages, what, you know, what part of the money is ComEd going to put up about that? You know, it's the old butcher money where your mouth is? If in fact, now I have buried cable, okay? My electrical's all buried. Let's say my retention pond goes a little high, and my power goes out, and I say, you promised it wouldn't do this anymore. It goes out, and the basement floods and, you know, $500 worth of frozen food thaws. What's ComEd going to do?
Like I said, we've got those performance metrics in the legislation that call for an increase or a decrease in the number of outages and the duration of outages as we measure them today. I mean, we keep track of those things now, and we've drawn, you know, lines in the sand and said, if the legislation goes through, this is our commitment to improve reliability. If there is an outage in the future, obviously you could file a claim for whatever damages you had, and that outage would be reviewed to determine, now, there's still going to be storms, there's still going to be equipment problems, there's still going to be outages even if we spend $2 billion on the system. We hope that it would result in a marked decrease in the number of outages and the duration.
Now, when you say the claims are going to be reviewed, the legislation doesn't set the parameters for claims, does it?
As it's written, it doesn't, but our current claims conditions apply.
What happens if you don't meet those metrics that are in the legislation? What sort of consequences are?
I may turn to Jose for that. I know that there are, I think it's financial, it gets back to the rate of return that's.
So Ron, we have performance metrics. We, 20% increase in improved in our frequency of outage and a 15% improvement in the duration of outages. If we don't meet those specific parameters, we can jeopardize the whole program, and part of that investment money that we're recouping from customers through the $3 rate increase would be returned to customers.
So the program would basically end?
There's a five-year checkoff where it's going to be reviewed, but on a yearly basis, that 20% increase in improvement in frequency and 15% improvement in duration, that's through the course of the 10-year period, but it will be viewed on an annual basis. Just like anything, we'll have reports going to the Illinois Commerce Commission for their review. And I think, you know, one of the questions that was raised, well, why haven't you been doing this on a year-to-year basis? Why don't you plan ahead? It's really hard to plan an investment program for us because we are regulated by the ICC. We go in for rate increase every two, three years, and at that point, we're putting in a rate request, and our equipment goes through depreciation, so we're not really getting what we're investing. So through this new process, we're hoping that going in on a yearly basis for a rate increase will provide us with that opportunity to do better planning, as you suggested. Now, one of the misconceptions that is out there is that ComEd is going to get an automatic rate increase every year. That's wrong. It's false because just like it is today, we will go in on a yearly basis before any rate increase takes place. We will submit our plan for the following year. The ICC will review it and will, just like they do today, they will anoint or give us the amount of money that would be justified to do our improvements for that year. And then once it's agreed upon, then the rate increase would go into effect. So one of the fallacies has been that it's an yearly increase for ComEd, and that's not just accurate, that's not accurate. It's going to go through the same review process that the Illinois Commerce Commission has today. The same intervenor groups will have the ability to review the information that's submitted. The only difference will be it's going to be going from an 11-month review to an eight-month review period.
Now, your duration and frequency at 20% and 15% respectively over 10 years, is that the best ComEd can do is 2% and 1.5% per year for 10 years?
I'm sorry. Yes, right now, it was negotiated. We've met with legislators and intervenor groups, Cub, ARP, and that was the agreed-upon measure at this point. So yes.
So it's feasible to say that the infrastructure is so old that no amount of updating at the pace that you've been doing would ever get to the point where it would be acceptable?
At the pace we do it now, we can't keep up with the aging of the system. So that's one of the drivers for this entire program.
Number two is, what happens if it doesn't get passed?
If it doesn't get passed, it's a status quo where we review the performance of the feeders each year, and Mike's team identifies what needs to be done to improve the performance of the, you know.
So it gets worse?
So the five-year infrastructure plan is out the window if it doesn't pass?
Correct. And the smart meters for everyone is out the window if it doesn't pass.
But if the system keeps getting older and it doesn't get replaced, only as needed to be fixed?
So I guess the biggest question is here, how is it that a company like Commonwealth Edison cannot have some form of replacement program put together for old infrastructure just as a small village?
Lee, it does.
We have.
It does. It's just not very fast at it, and it doesn't have a lot of it.
Right, we do. 900 million every year we set aside.
And I guess I go back to the other thing is, you talk about replacing the meters and the boxes and everything else. Honestly, I think you're going to find more boxes out there that are older than you think they are that have been reused, and there's going to be problems with them, and it's going to cost a lot of people a lot of money, other than $3 a month on their bill. I mean, I'm sorry, but I'm a little skeptic of the whole scenario at this point because it seems like every time in the past that ComEd has wanted to do something like this, and we've heard promises before that we're going to update and we're going to try to get our infrastructure better and everything else, but yet here we are, 2011, and we're hearing the same thing, well, we can't catch up. We can't get ahead of this.
I'd like to see the amount of generators sold in the last couple of years compared to years past.
And just for your awareness, 44 other states in the country have some sort of smart grid program or legislation in place already. So if this doesn't pass, we're going to be one of the few states across the country that does not have anything formal in place. So that's why it's imperative, and we're hoping that this legislation pass. I like your challenge. I accept your challenge, but if the legislation does pass, I think you will see a noticeable improvement in reliability.
You're also dealing with the state of Illinois, too.
What's your plan if it doesn't pass? Just put up with it and keep going as is?
Yeah, I think as John just stated, we're just going to keep doing what we're doing now.
Wouldn't it be less of a pain in the neck for you guys as a company to deal with less baloney, less phone calls, less outages to plan and be proactive? It just doesn't make sense to me. Maybe I'm looking at it the wrong way.
They'd have to spend more of their money to do that.
Oh, well, oh, sorry.
Well, I have two questions. First of all, why in a presentation, is this a presentation that you're giving to every municipality and people that have questions about it?
Many municipalities.
Okay. Why would you say that we should spend money to get more accurate bills?
Right now, we, due to workload and other operational issues, we estimate customer bills. Not every month, but occasionally we'll estimate customer bills. What happens is, we'll go out and read the following month, get an actual read, and it'll generate a bill complaint, you know, because of the, the estimate may be high, the estimate may be low. It's not the right way to run a business is to be estimating your bills. It's better to get actual bills each month. So right now, over the course of the year, we estimate a fair number of bills.
My core does it. They actually do it quite well.
Yeah, customers hate estimated bills.
As an example, during the, the blizzard in February, the pilot area, they had a 98% read capability during that blizzard storm because we were able to do it remotely. Everybody else who did not have a smart meter, myself included, I think the percentage of read for those first few days during that blizzard was only about 50%. So, 50% of customers received estimated bills and people just hate estimated bills because...
What is your, what, when, when you estimate a bill?
Yes, sir.
For a customer, what is the percentage that you use? And, and do you derive from the last actual meter reading and then put an estimated percentage? Do you go back over a period of time to look and see what the actual usage is in that home or that business? And then, do you have a percentage that you add on to that bill as an estimate?
I'm not a billing...
Generally, it's based on the previous year's usage for that, that same period. So, okay, hot summer versus a cool summer. And right there, you've got a call from the customer that gets the estimated bill from, during a cool summer, that was based on the usage during the, you know, the similar time period last summer, which was a hot summer. So, right there, you've got a bill investigation, you've got time and energy tied up with that, you've got customer, you know, customer complaint because of a high bill. The next month, we go out there, we get an actual reading and then there's a, you know, there's a, there's a true-up because the meter is just a cumulative meter, but, you know, when we do that in tens of thousands of cases, it just adds to the CSR workload, the meter reading workload. If you have any, go out there and take a check reading or, or whatever the, you know, the step is.
Now, how long does it take after you do an estimated reading for it to either be overestimated or underestimated to where the customer is actually going to either recoup that or cost them more? How many months does that take to show up on the bill?
At the next actual read is when it would true-up, so generally, that would be the following month, you know, best-case scenarios, we wouldn't be estimating multiple months of, of bills. Though we do have cases where we have, you know, poor access, we can't get to a meter. If we've got an automatic, you know, a smart meter in there, we don't have to send a meter reader out there, make an appointment with the landlord, get into the building, open up the building, et cetera. So, we, you know, we reduce the, the missed reads and the estimated reads.
I can appreciate that personally, you have to have pretty thick skin because ComEd has sort of girded your loins and sent you out to the general public to handle these type of sessions. So, I commend you personally. So, I, that said, I must ask you, how much did ComEd spend in the last five years on political contributions and paid lobbyists?
Don't have that answer for you. I'm, I'm not familiar with it, so, but we do have a, a PAC, just like every other corporation and, but I don't know the amount.
Okay. Thank you.
I just, just kind of a question from experience. When we have an outage that goes several days and it's a commercial building, perhaps a food store, a business, whatever, why is there such an overwhelming reluctance on the part of ComEd to pull a generator truck up and run a cable across that parking lot and run that business? And I know it can be done because after much screaming on my part, I was able to accomplish that three years ago in Downers Grove and that generator sat there for five days. So, so why is there such a reluctance to respond to the businesses? Why does it take all that, you know, to be the squeaky wheel?
It depends on the situation. In a large storm, hundreds of thousands of customers out of service, generally, we don't roll generators out to commercial businesses. We're concentrating on the police fire 911 centers, water treatment centers. Occasionally, if there's a dire situation, we'll bring a generator out to one of those facilities in a storm situation. But on a, on a blue-sky day, if the cable faults and it, it's quicker to get a generator out there than it is to dig up the cable and fix it, we will bring a generator out, you know, to a, to a customer location, you know, with critical load like that, you know, grocery store or something like that. That happens unfortunately too regu, too regularly because of underground cable faults and that type of thing, and we do have generators staged, you know, throughout the service territory for those cases. But, you know, there's a, there's a protocol that we go through, you know, on staging those types of, installing those types of things. But in a large, you know, big, big storm event, you know, we're, we're working on restoration. The crews that would be hooking up that generator are working on restoring service to those, those critical facilities and large groups of customers. But we do have them and we do, we do roll them out.
I know you do.
I mean, we, we personally have been involved in many of those cases.
I know you do.
With the board's permission, I'd like to open it up to the public. I know we have a few people here. Everybody's all right with that? I don't know if they have something to say or...
Okay.
We have to come up.
Please come on up.
I live on the other side of Lincoln. In the last 15 years, every summer, three or four times during the storm season, a good storm, we go out every time. That's not a pole, that's not a wire, not really sure what it is, but it's a consistent thing. What you're talking about here doesn't even sound like it's going to attempt to fix what goes on every single time. And the across the street never goes out.
What's your address?
337 South Lincoln.
337 South?
Because it does it all the time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
What you were asking about with the wires, I, I had a question on, on that. Okay, and I'm just going to do this so I can see a picture. Okay, here's my meter, okay, down here. Up here is where the electricity gets attached to my house with the wires going this way. This box here is my responsibility, is my understanding. Where the wires hit my house, it's my responsibility. Okay, so when you're replacing the wires on the poles, are you also replacing the wires to my house?
Under this program, we would not. We would just be replacing the pole-to-pole wires.
So, the wires to my house should not, there should not be a problem with the upgrade that you're going to do on those poles?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
If, if your wire looks bad, if it's frayed, if a tree's leaning on it and worn it, you can call and ask to have someone come out and take a look at it. And we do replace those overhead secondary wires when necessary, but the work that we would be doing under the infrastructure would just be on our main line feeds.
So, you do replace the wires from the pole to my house?
If needed. If needed.
I thought that I was responsible for that connection to my house.
You're responsible for everything beyond those connectors up at the weatherhead, so that there's a little stubble wire that's provided.
So, you'd replace them, but bill or back for them?
No.
Oh, okay.
That would be a normal...
Normal, all right.
Put it in the standard...
All right.
Okay.
What if there's other residents that are listening that aren't here that have the same concern that she just had and you asked her for her address? How can they get ahold of you and do the same thing? Because I'm sure there's quite a few others out there.
Yeah, I'd say we normally go through, Ron, you know, the village representative who we're in contact with regularly.
So, to call the village?
Call the village, send an email.
Use our web QA system.
Yeah, web QA, not, don't call.
24 hours a day.
Okay.
They can certainly call, but that, you know, they can do that anytime, any day of the week if they want to put data in there and we'll be happy to pass that on to ComEd.
Yeah, because I don't think, I don't think Ron should have to be the liaison to...
I don't mind, but...
So, we'll pass on these names and addresses and you're going to do what with them?
And, and I'm sorry, we, I didn't want to confuse it. If someone's got an imminent problem issue, call the 1-800-EDISON1 number. They can have someone come out and take a look at the equipment. If there's a chronic outage situation that requires us and our engineers to take a look at, generally, those come in, to me, through our, through the village representative.
We, we do hear about those things and we do have discussions on annual basis with ComEd when they give their annual reports, so we do appreciate hearing those kinds of things. Again, it's, it's kind of like their situation. If we don't hear, though, we don't necessarily know that it is a chronic situation. I know a number of years ago, they did upgrades in the Oakwood area and that was based on a lot of those kinds of complaints over a long period of time.
If there's something wrong, we'll serve them.
Anything else?
With the one I was talking about, mine, you guys know it because every time mine goes out, 55th and Cass is out. So, every time that lights out, my power's out. So, that's telling you how often it occurs.
Is there a chance we could get business cards from you guys while you're here?
Sure.
Could we do that?
All right, well, thank you, gentlemen, for presenting.
Thank you.
Back to mayor reports. The last thing I, I want to just say is September 11th is approaching and the Village of Westmont, September 11th, will be having a, their 10th anniversary ceremony. If everybody could please join us this Sunday at the Westmont Fire Police Facility, 500 North Cass Avenue at 1:00 PM. It's going to be a great ceremony. Hope everybody can make it.
Get the info from... Thank you.
Moving along, Madam Clerk.
I have been asked by our Health and Wellness Committee to make an announcement.
Thanks.
There will be free blood screening available on September 12th from 7:00 AM till 11:00 AM. And at 11:30, a doctor will go over the results with... It's limited to 120 people. It's through the Illinois Heart and Vascular Institute in Hinsdale. The phone number there, if people want to get on the list, like I said, it's limited to 120. The phone number is 630-972-6230. The lady there's name is Cindy Johnston. You can email her. It is C-Johnstone, J-O-H-N-S-T-O-N-E@cardiacMGMT period dot com. It's free. It's here in the village hall in the accessory room right outside of our chambers here. So, anybody interested in a free blood screen, it will be next Monday. Please, and if you didn't get the numbers, I tried to talk slowly, please call the clerk's office tomorrow. I'll have them available there or the email address. But like I said, I was asked by the Health and Wellness Center, or Committee to mention this. Then, I want to announce that we will not have an Economic Development Committee meeting tomorrow morning. It has been moved to the 28th, which will be September 28th, a joint many, joint meeting of the Village Board, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Economic Development Committee. So, now, do you want to ask Fred to come up?
Yeah, Fred, would you mind coming up and just explain? I know we have a lot of upcoming meetings you, you talked about. If you want to give the public all those dates so they can be part of them?
Okay. Thank you very much. The clerk is absolutely correct. The meeting on September 28th, it is that combined meeting, will be part of the, kind of the, the work group for our comprehensive plan formulation for hopefully, you know, the, the next 10 or 15 years to guide us on a, on a correct path in terms of our overall development and vision for the community. So, that will consist of, as, as the clerk said, our EDC, the Village Board, and the Planning and Zoning Commission for that meeting on the 28th. Then, on September 29th at 8:00 AM, our comp plan consultants will be conducting a business workshop with members of the business community and also one day of key person interviews with perhaps half a dozen people from various walks of life throughout the community. On October 4th at 7:00 PM, House CEO Levine, our comp plan consultants, will be conducting a community workshop that the public is most cordially invited to attend and participate in that visioning session for our comp plan. And House CEO Levine will also be conducting a second day of key person interviews on the day of October 4th. Then, on October 25th, at a time yet to be determined, we don't know whether that's going to be a day or an evening meeting, our Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee will convene to review the existing conditions synthesis report that is under preparation by our comprehensive planning consultants. So, we've got a kind of an active schedule. We're starting to get into that meeting time and we're starting to roll up our sleeves and really do the work and lay the, the foundation for our comprehensive plan for the community for the future.
Good. Thank you.
I thought we might be meeting next Tuesday, but we won't, will not be meeting and I was going to do this then, but I want to say a happy birthday to our, our arborist, John Yader.
Oh, John Yader.
His birthday's next Tuesday. So, I just wanted to tell him a happy birthday. That poor boy has been hanging for trees, he's working in trees for weeks. So, that's all.
Moving on, our village attorney, John Semenek.
I have nothing to report tonight. Thanks.
And next, our village manager, Ron Searle.
I have nothing either.
Okay. Moving on to unfinished business. I'm sorry. One last quick thing. We don't...
Are we going to combine the next meeting?
Trustee Emery has a short, something short to say to us?
Last Thursday, I spoke about the issue about gangs and punk behavior and I misspoke on one of the items that I said I owe an apology to the police department and the dispatchers. My neighbor who was stopped two times, two nights in a row, the, coming home from work after midnight on 60th Street, the information that was originally given was she said she called the police and was told unless these kids did something wrong, there was nothing they could do about them walking down the middle of the street. On Friday, both the chief and I went and visited this woman and talked to her independently and she said that she did not call the police. So, I apologize to the, the dispatchers for saying that this bad information came from them. The woman said that she talked to the police. She went to an officer who was sitting in a squad car over in Twin Lakes Park and talked to him about it, and so the investigation continues, but as far as the behavior of certain young residents of our town, that hasn't changed. So, thank you.
Okay. Moving on, unfinished business. Water rate analysis fiscal year 2012. Board to consider a motion accepting the water rate analysis study and directing the future consideration of a water rate increase ordinance to account for maintenance and infrastructure costs.
Motion to approve, Fleming.
Second, Emery.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
And this is to, it says to direct future consideration of water rate increases and we had discussed Thursday that it was to adopt the staff's recommendations, but that's not included in this. That will come later?
There were two parts. One was to automatically pass through the increases that came from the Water Commission, but we would look and reevaluate each year what our infrastructure needs were and present possibly rate adjustments at the, on an annual basis.
Okay. Yes.
Ready? All right, moving on, new business. Number three, Westmont Chamber of Commerce Oktoberfest. Board to consider an ordinance approving a permit request for live sound amplification at the Westmont Chamber of Commerce Oktoberfest on September 23rd from 6:00 to 10:00 PM at 25 North Cass Avenue.
Motion to approve, Emery.
Second, Scott.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Okay. Number four, Westmont High School Homecoming Events. Board to consider an ordinance approving permit request for sound amplification, partial street closure of Cass Avenue, and a waiver of the open burning provision of the West, for the Westmont Homecoming Parade and Bonfire Event on September 29th, 2011, from 6:15 to 9:00 PM.
Motion to approve, Seneca?
Second, Emery.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Moving on, number five, Downtown Development Permit at 37 West Quincy Street. Board to consider an ordinance approving a downtown development permit for Mr. Michael Talier for the musicians' workshop at 37 West Quincy Street.
Motion to approve, Emery.
Second, Scott.
Further discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Okay, number six, Downtown Development Permit at 29... Okay, number six, Downtown Development Permit at 29 North Cass. Board to consider an ordinance approving a development permit for Michael Tucker for Wine Tuck LLC at 29 North Cass Avenue. And no, this gentleman wasn't here last Thursday.
Mr. Chairman, I regret to inform the board, I received a, upon arriving to work this morning at approximately 8:00, I had a voicemail message that was delivered to my voicemail at 6:34 AM today from Mr. Tucker, indicating that he was going to be unable to attend this evening's meeting, and requesting that we postpone this to the next set of meetings. He did not give an explanation, but promised to contact staff in the next couple of days to schedule a meeting with us to explain the, what the delay is. I have no further information beyond that.
Motion to postpone, Emery.
Second, Seneca.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Number seven, Downtown Development Permit at 100 South Cass. Board to consider an ordinance approving a downtown development permit for Brian and Linda Polisic for digital conference providers and innovators pre-market at 100 South Cass Avenue.
Motion to approve, Scott.
Second, Emery.
Discussion?
Yes. Can we have it in there that they come to us with their signage, because it's such a unique concept, and then there's also a non-retail, that I think we, you know, at least I would like to see what it's going to look like from outside?
I would agree with that.
I'm okay with that?
Most definitely.
Can I add that to the ordinance?
Absolutely.
We have a motion in a second.
We do.
Roll call?
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
All right, number eight, Class 17 Liquor License. Board to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 10 of the Westmont Code of Ordinances to create a new Class 17 Liquor License.
Motion to approve, Emery.
Second, Scott.
Discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Moving forward, number nine, Award of the Roof Replacement Contract to Glenbrook Group. Board to consider a construction contract bid award ordinance with the Glenbrook Group for roof replacement at the water plant.
Motion to approve, Emery.
Second, Fleming.
Discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Moving on, number 10, Reschedule of the Committee of the Whole Meeting. After further discussion, I think the board would like to consider a motion to reschedule the Thursday, September 15th Committee of the Whole Meeting, and combine it with the normal board meeting on September 19th, so we would consolidate both meetings till Monday, September 19th.
Motion to approve, Emery, as amended.
Second, Seneca.
Discussion?
Just so everybody out there understands, the reason this meeting is being consolidated on this occasion is due to the Illinois Municipal League Conference, and the mayor and trustee and the manager will not be in attendance that evening, so that's why we're combining the meeting onto the 19th.
Okay. Motion in a second. Roll call?
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
All right, moving on, miscellaneous, number 11, Finance Ordinance, number nine.
We have before us on this sixth day of September 2011, a finance ordinance in the amount of $1,228,324.23.
Motion to approve, Seneca?
Second, Emery.
Discussion? Call?
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Number 12, Purchase Orders.
Motion to approve the purchase orders is a black for $433,808.90.
Second, Fleming.
Discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Hearing no request for executive session, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the village board meeting.
I'd like to say one more thing, if I could. I just want to congratulate Trustee Nero on his first mayor pro tem in the seat tonight, and nice job.
Fine job.
Thank you, Trustee Fleming.
Fine job.
Thank you. All right, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, Seneca.
Second, Emery.
Roll call?
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.